Good evening, everyone. Let's get Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024's meeting off to a start. Tracy, could I have a roll call, please?
Leibl?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the agenda, and I don't think there are any changes other than what's in front of you right now. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there that you want to pull off and talk about separately? That was a great question. Hopefully, you all got a firm handle on the zero semifinal pay application. You guys okay with that? Okay. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second. And second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Item five is public comment time. Now, this is reserved for time that the public can address council for any items that are already not on our agenda tonight. I don't think I have anybody out there in the audience for public comments, so I'm going to close the public comment time period. Pass it on to item six, Josiah, our engineer's report.
Thank you. It's pretty quiet out there, but a couple of updates. City Hall, the elevator installation was kind of a big thing. That's underway. That should be finishing up in the next couple of weeks. The interior work is continuing well, still on track for our move-in date, and there is a, I think we're having a walkthrough with a furniture supplier tomorrow, so.
We are.
Be an exciting, exciting time. Rancho Way, Phase Five. As the mayor noted, we had that change order and pay app, which was basically zero. That's to get the paperwork completed. Now that's approved, the DOT will sign off that all the field work is finished, and we're moving into the audit process on that one, but that is a major step in their paperwork. And last, the Streets and Maintenance Facility interior remodel was bid in December and then awarded. We did have a kickoff pre-construction meeting with them, which went well. They're going to mobilize at the end of this month, and they are, they're planning their schedule to be done in August, so ahead of schedule, but that's always dependent on the electrical, mechanical equipment showing up on time and getting, getting there. So they have a good schedule. It's always good to start when they're ahead of, planning ahead of when they're supposed to be done. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Josiah. Any questions for Josiah? All right. Ryan, I'll kick it over to you for our city administrator report.
Okay. Well, I, thank you. I'm deferring my time this evening to Michael. Michael's agreed to talk to us a little bit about snow removal, how the process has gone and kind of what they're working on now, maybe address some of the challenges we're having as well. So, Michael, thanks for agreeing to do that.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me time. I brought some maps, if anybody's interested, on kind of how we do snow removal, routing, things like that. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a busy couple of weeks, for sure. Looks like some additional weather tomorrow, but guys are in good spirits, and we're preparing for that, so we should be in good shape. A little bit on how we do our snow removal, as far as cul-de-sacs, streets, priority roads, secondaries, things like that. We're always going to service those priority roads. Rancho Way, 965, Forever Green, Penn Street, Dubuque Street, those are always going to be priorities. And then we'll subdivide off into those secondary roads, feeder streets into subdivisions, scales bin, Deerfield Drive, things like that. And then last priority would be those dead ends or cul-de-sacs or locations that are just, one, not as much speed, two, not as many people living on them, and, and we can serve the most that we can with the time and the efficiency that we can. Little bit of information about how we do snow removal in cul-de-sacs. So usually, in every cul-de-sac, there's a number of obstacles or things that you're looking at when you're in there. Sometimes you can see them, sometimes you can't. Those items would be, you know, usually, there's always a fire hydrant, there's a light usually there, there's multiple driveways, a storm intake, and there's usually one or two good spots you can go with it. So with heavier snow, you're always struggling to try and get it to those spots, and you don't always have the, you know, there's, there's certain pieces of equipment that are ideal for it. Well, we don't have every single piece of equipment for those cul-de-sacs, so you place that equipment in the locations that best serves that purpose and is in the most efficient way of routing that equipment. So we do get some complaints on that. I'll follow up on those and try and educate the public on, on if we did have issues or, you know, every now and then we'll have a mistake and it'll be on our fault, and we'll take care of it. So that's probably the, the biggest thing dealing with the public on is just communicating with them, helping them understand something that they may not understand, and really, until you're in that truck moving that snow, it's kind of hard to understand. I wish we could keep it from everybody's driveway. I wish we could just push a button and it, and it wouldn't go, but it has to go somewhere. So that's frustrating for residents, and, you know, at the end of the day, my, my staff's going home cleaning their driveways, too, so. But in a nutshell, that's, that's how we go about it. We have a pre-meeting every season to talk about goals, expectations, what we look for, and then each pre-storm, we'll have a meeting. I'll update the guys on what to expect, as best as the forecast is showing, and we go from there. So entertain any questions that you guys may have gotten from the public or that you're just curious on, on your own.
Michael, I appreciate that you answered my question. That's why I asked you to come up in regards to the cul-de-sacs. So thanks for the education and what you're doing out there. How is the equipment holding up? Have you had any, any major things that needed some attention after these storms?
Sure, sure. So we always have wear parts, right? Cutting edges, tire chains, things like that, and so you're always dealing with that. Hopefully, you have time in between storms to do that. Unfortunately, here lately, we haven't had as much time, but we're managing. No major breakdowns. We've been very fortunate with that. Knock on wood. I don't know if this made a wood, but, so, so everything's rolling pretty good, and we do have some secondary pieces of equipment that are not ideal, but a guy can jump into if a, if a primary one's down.
Thank you again.
Yeah.
Michael, I wouldn't mind seeing the snow routes. It's been a few years, so if you have a map, I, I would love to see it again. And then, as, as the mayor's talking about the, the maintenance and repair, so after these long events and your crews have been out, it's the same crews doing the maintenance, correct?
Yeah, I think, I'll get back up there, but, so this one, just leave this part, pass around, but that one's a primary road, and these are cul-de-sacs. So those are about, we have about 75 cul-de-sacs somewhere there.
I've never seen that map.
Great, great question or comment. So while we're doing the snowplow routes, while we're doing the clearing of the streets, we're still working with traffic signals that have been hit by semis. We're still working with signs that have been taken down by pedestrians. We're still working with sewer backups. We're still working with animal control. So all those things are still happening, locates, things like that, while my staff is still trying to stand on top of the snow. We prioritize, obviously, but we've gotten great help from other departments. You know, a lot of times, me and Guy are struggling for the same space, right? He's, he's doing the trails, we're doing the, the streets, and a lot of times, our streets spew over into the, into the trail area. So his guys have been great. I feel awful about it when we do that. They're just great to work with. We've gotten help from Water Department, wastewater, we've gotten help from city staff on, hey, I need to order food for these guys, you know, they've been here forever. We need to get something there in their stomachs, and, and definitely a good team atmosphere, so.
Any other questions for Michael?
I'm sure they've been extremely busy. Are you, you know, you said they were in good spirits. You know, is everyone, is everyone being safe? Like, they can only, how long can they actually?
So we'll run, like, for the storm that we just had, that was multiple days. When we get multiple days like that, we'll start splitting up into teams so that we can have eight hours off or close to eight hours off to refresh, and, and to be honest, a lot of times, just unplug. You know, you just need to unplug a little bit. And then that other team is servicing the town during that timeframe, and then we'll overlap and swap back in. So we've done that a number of storms when they go multiple days. So I think the crew was in this morning at 3:30. Probably be pretty similar tomorrow at 3:30. It's pretty icy at 3:30 this morning, so.
I just have a question, Mayor. Michael, can you talk a little bit about what you're doing when some might consider this downtime, obviously? It's not, you were going at it this morning at 3:30, but there's snow on the ground, it's melting, the cleanup type stuff, some of those things. You, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yep. So, um, in regards to, we've got snow in areas, you know, your secondary roads, your subdivisions, they look kind of rough early in the week, and so we're, we're working towards getting them back to what our mains look like right now. And in the most, we've been, we've been very lucky as far as temperatures. That allows us to do a lot with different pieces of equipment and chemical, so we've been able to tackle a lot of that. Other areas that, actually, we're getting a lot of help from wastewater and water on is just snow removal from cul-de-sacs. You only have so much space in cul-de-sacs to store it, and then you start running out. So they're helping us remove those, and we'll go to city parks sometimes or dead-end roads, and we'll dump it there, just really anywhere that's going to be out of the way and not cause issues. Other questions that we'll get is line of sight. We've got some intersections where we've got line of sight issues because we've gotten so much snow, and, and, you know, obviously, those go up on a priority schedule of trying to get to those as soon as possible, so we'll remove those. I know one area that me and Guy will want to get a hold of is like Zeller area, Zeller Street, Rancho Way. We've got a pile there, but, you know, traffic's managing, and we'll just keep plugging away at it. But this particular storm presented challenges where we had closed roads. The west side of town was just, we couldn't maintain or keep it open just because of the winds for so long, and so it took a, took a while to get those roads back open.
Thanks again. Appreciate your perspective on this and a little context on what, what you've been dealing with up there.
Certainly. I've got, I can't commend my staff and my teammates around. I mean, super good support, so, thank you.
Appreciate that, Michael. Thank you. Brian, did you have anything else?
Uh, no. Thank you.
For your report. Okay. I'll move on to my report, just to.
We can email him if you'd like.
That's the first time I've seen the, the cul-de-sac map. That, that actually is pretty impressive. I, I have not seen that in visual form, so that's really good.
I was doing some mental math on how many of the 75 cul-de-sacs I could think of. That's a lot. I got to five. Just a couple of things for me calendar-wise. Next Friday is the, I think you all get the emails now for the first Coffee Connections. It's the first Friday of every month. This month's going to be at Midwest One Bank. I won't be able to make it there, unfortunately, but I, so I hope one of you or a few of you will be able to make it. The city generally sends someone and will be there as well. Last night, Eric and Paul and I were able to attend, along with Ryan, the joint entities meeting. I will say you didn't miss anything because you were given it all in an email ahead of time. So those two items that were sent in that email, if you haven't reviewed them yet, that's what was discussed last night. The, the transit report will be brought back to us as a city council here in North Liberty, and there will be a presentation to us here in the next couple of months. So hold questions until then, I suppose. Paul, maybe during your comments, or Eric, if you have anything to add on what that was like last night. If I missed anything, just let me know. And I'm also going to defer to those of you that went to the Better Together 2030 awards last week. Weather kept me from getting there, so I will look for some updates on that. And finally, our MPO requires a, a city, either Iowa City, Corleville, or North Liberty, to have a member of elected body on the ECI cog board, and I will be starting that Thursday. That's a once-a-month thing for, for a year. And on that note, I don't think I've officially announced it, but Brent has graciously taken over our spot on the Think Iowa City Board, and is your first meeting Tuesday?
Already done.
You did one.
Orientation's done. First meeting was the night of the Bravo Awards, so first one in.
Awesome. So thanks for doing that for us. That's all I have. I'll move on to item nine, which is council reports, and feel free to jump in and update us on things that you've been doing on behalf of the city here over the last couple of weeks.
So Mary mentioned the Better Together 2030 Bravo and Sizzle Awards. I sit as VP now, taking Rakesh's spot on that board, and it, it was a lot of fun. We kind of joked at the end of the night that we needed to reinforce our table because we had so many awards on it from, from the city of North Liberty, so it was a good, good night of take-home. Bravo Award went to Kelly Forkenbrock from our library staff. They had a, they had a very nice tribute to her and the work that she's done, not just in North Liberty and the library, but regionally, so we want to thank her and congratulate her on her Bravo Award. And then Nick and Jillian and Ryan accepted for the city a Sizzle Award for all of the work and the development of North Liberty's next stage. So very good, very good award ceremony, and, and again, we, North Liberty was central in a lot of it, and we're recognized in a number of ways, so we have a lot to be, a lot to be proud of there. And then only other thing was the Think Iowa City, which we just, just mentioned, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
As you mentioned, the joint entities meeting last night, there were those two items, the Trip Connect and the CBI, Community Violence Initiative. They also had an update from Sarah Nelson about the 988 program, and just to make clear to everyone that you can text 988 to get help with suicidal thoughts and ideations, and they've had 25, was it, correct me if I'm wrong, but I heard 2,500 texts since July 2022 to 988. So it's a useful tool and necessary tool, so. That's all I had.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, I would, I would mention that on Friday, we took a tour at Field Day for, to look at the brewing happening for Centennial Park Pilsner. I don't personally drink, but my fiancee and I went there after the fact, and she said it tasted great and went down real smooth, so I would encourage everyone out there to give it a try. And I wanted to mention, it was about a week ago, but just an example of, you know, how North Liberty helps each other, and there was a car that pulled into the move-in self-storage, and it must have been within a couple minutes. There was a police officer there, Officer Miller, a good Samaritan. My fiancee and I ended up stopping to him within a matter of a couple of minutes. He was, he was pushed out, and I just thought that was a fun thing to mention, and that just speaks to the greatness of our community. Yeah, and I would say, just from a real estate perspective, with the rain coming on top of the snow to keep an eye, if, if folks want to keep an eye on their sump pumps and potential ice damming, that is a, that's a good idea to keep an eye on that stuff, so that's what I have.
Thanks, Paul.
And happy birthday to Brian. Sorry, that was one more thing.
Excellent. Any chance we can to throw each other under the bus?
Thank you. I appreciate that, so I'll take that as my, my opportunity to talk a little bit. It's only been a week, but last week, I did attend the Cedar Rapids Economic Alliance luncheon, learned a little bit more about some of the progress that's been made in 2023, some of their growth focus for 2024, so I think it's good to be part, as part of the corridor to attend those events, and it was, it was a nice event. There was also an introduction from a Common Sense Iowa group. It's a bipartisan group that focuses on researching, modeling, potential effects of public policies on the state's economy and stuff, so it was just an introductory group or an introduction to that group, but they plan to study housing, tax policy, and workforce issues, so I thought it was a, is a nice just introduction and just information setup for what they have planned for the state of Iowa as a whole. So I attended the Field Day launch of the, the Centennial Park Pilsner as well. I did have a beer, it was really good. See a few more in the future, but I really just wanted to focus on, you know, it was a great event, and the focus on our community is really, you know, rewarding, really appreciate the support that they, that they offered, and want to say a specific thank you to that, and then on the, on the, on the back end of that, encourage other businesses and other leaders to think outside the box for opportunities to, to contribute and make an impact in the community like that, because it'll, collectively, it all goes a long way, so I wanted to say thank you for that. And then I attended the Better Together Awards as well, and just wanted to reemphasize Brent's comments and say congratulations to Kelly, to, and to the city, city staff that really put that Growth Mindset Award, made that happen, so.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
So, and last, big snow last Thursday, I made it out to the Jack for Emergency Management meeting, and this was the budget meeting for the year, so that was approved, and it was pretty flat, other than, as same as we're finding out, utilities are going up and insurance was a big, and thing, and insurance for healthcare employees and, you know, stuff, so. So that was interesting, get that taken care of, and I also, I went to the Field Day event, and I got to tell you that the people there are really excited about helping North Liberty. I'm not sure if he's more excited about how he brews beer or helping North Liberty, but he was very excited about both, so.
That's great. Thank you, guys, for those updates. Item 10, Mr. Hayer, is our FY 2024-25 budget. Pick this up.
Thank you. So tonight, a couple of things on our plate, as noted on your agenda, review the operating budget, and really, there's not a whole lot to review. Then we'll talk quickly about social services, and hopefully, you folks can come to a conclusion on a number we can put into the, the budget process, and then finally, we have some folks in the audience that'll help us through our capital projects discussion. Just on the, the only comment I'd make on the operating budget, everything remains the same from the last report you saw. What will change, though, is information I shared with you late today. We finally got numbers in from the state on the business tax credit and the backfill shared funding we get from the state, and we under-budgeted for that in a good way, so we'll see, we have about $52,000 more coming in than what showed in your budget document. So that'll bump that general fund surplus up to about 80, I'd say 85,000 or 87,000. And what I'd like to do is go back to the department heads and look at restoring some of the line items that we, that we had to cut out prior to knowing where we were on this, and we could have that back in front of you for a review at the February 13th meeting. Other than that, I think we're, unless there are any other questions, I think we're pretty well settled on the operating budget outside of the social service grant process. Questions on that?
Just a quick question, I think, for clarity, Ryan, if, if we don't go back to the department heads, and that money just goes to the general fund for the following year, is that correct?
Goes to the.
For the, the surplus that you said, the 57, yeah.
Yeah. Goes into the reserve.
Reserve. Thank you.
And on that note, Ryan, for, for Brian and Paul's benefit, could you update them on what sort of a reserve target goal we shoot for?
Yes, so several years ago, the council adopted a policy based on best practices that Tracy and I hear about through trainings, to keep a, a general fund balance of about minimum of 25%. Our policy says 25 to 30%. We've been at that 30% now for some time, and then at the end of the year, if our general fund has more than 30% in it, we'll come back to the city council and say, okay, so here's how far above we are of that 30%, and maybe that equals $100,000, let's say. Let's reallocate that somewhere. Put it, it's one-time money. Let's put it towards a project or something like that and get feedback from this group. So that's kind of how that works. Okay, so let's talk about social services. I'll just do a real quick.
At least whatever time you need. Yep, whatever time you need.
So you saw in your packet that over the last few years, incrementally, we've increased this dollar amount. The last two years, in order to help the general fund, we've brought in, transferred in money from our ARPA fund, the federal government funds, to cover this expense. We're not proposing to do that this year because eventually, that money's going to be gone, and we need to get it back into the flow of the budget. The question for the group is, what do you want that number to be this year? It was 135 in FY '22, it was 155 last year. Once you make that decision, once the budget's approved, then Tracy reaches out to the, to the local social service groups with an application. They apply for funding and then are back in front of the city council. Now, to say that, I think the mayor and I have talked a little bit about looking at perhaps a different approach and how we, how we do that, because it is very time-consuming and maybe not as efficient as it could be. Conversation for another day. Really, the, the bottom line here is whatever number you set now will be the number that you are able to grant out in a couple of months. So I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
So Tracy, I failed to ask this question in advance. Do you have an idea, generally on top of your head, what our request was last year for dollar amounts? Were we, were we talking like 230,000, 240,000? Does anybody up here have that number?
Two, 220 at least. I know that for sure.
And we, we had, we did have one or two that were rather extraordinary requests that took up probably most of that, but I'd say of the 155,000 that we awarded, we probably would have liked to have had another $5,000 or $10,000 to fill in the gaps on there. I don't think we would have gotten to 200,000 by any means, but what are, what were some of your thoughts on how that wrapped up last year, what more we could have done? And I guess I'm kind of starting from there, if, because that's the memories I have.
So I, I think that I probably, you know, when I, I made it come up to where we had and stuff, but, you know, I had to cut things I thought were useful and stuff, so I think that, you know, you know, singers are getting expensive for us, it's getting expensive for other folks and stuff, too, and there's a lot of agencies who really do a lot of work that's very important to the city, so I think that we need to bump this up a little bit. I'm not sure, I am worried, though, long-term, how we're going to do this, but, you know, I, maybe like $10,000 into that and then addition to the 155, and then work with that.
Okay.
That would be my kind of recommendation. And to be clear, just from my, Ryan, what we have in the budget right now showing a $35,000 surplus or $87,000 surplus now is $155,000.
That is correct, yes.
So I'd agree with Brian, Mayor. There, there were things, and I had the same feeling, there were asks that we were cutting down to, to make it spread. I think there were asks that all of us agreed to not fund for, for various reasons. We, we like to, you know, go about it in our own way, but I do think that there was, really, for me, at a minimum, there was another 10 grand that really could have been helpful. I think that's really my basement number on this. I think we could even maybe do a little bit more. You know, if we look at the inflationary costs over the last few months, you know, some of those inflationary numbers that, over the months, were above 9%, so, you know, and those social services that were here were showing numbers that they were having record numbers, a lot of them on, on the ask. So I, for me, my basement, I think, would be 10, and I would entertain more just based off of other conversation.
Eric, you were there. Do you have some thoughts on where we would have liked to have been last year, how it compares to this year? Same.
And to Brent's point, I know this year, just from my experience with the pantry, we have doubled from 2021, the services that are going out, so the need is not getting less, so as much as we're able to put up, I think we need to put up. I would be, honestly, I'd be in favor of another 30,000 at least.
Thoughts on this, Paul?
Just the, there was quite a bit jump from '22 to '23. When, what was the, you know, was there a specific reason for that jump, and is that need the same now?
The needs are always going to be there. The needs are still the same. I'd seen the biggest reason for the jump is that we probably just didn't give it. You meant from, you said from '20 to '21, or from '22 to '23?
I think it was '22 to '23.
Yeah, we probably just didn't give it enough. We didn't give it enough of a, of a boost, as we should have on there. 30 grand more, huh?
Like I said, I always want more.
I would go right in the middle for 20. That's right.
Mayor, the consideration I always talk about in in this meeting really, too, one is the networking of everyone and how valuable that is.
Yeah.
If there's a way that we can help facilitate that this year, as we're taking information on applications, I, again, I don't want more work for staff. But if there's a handout or a one page or an email that can go out to give everybody that's here with asks contacts to one another, I think that would be helpful. And then the the second piece is with some of these organizations, I always sit here and I I consider the in-kind donations that we're doing as a city with the use of Ranshaw House for some of them, meeting space and those types of things. And that that does, for me, configure into how I decipher who who I think deserves the the dollar amount at the end of the night. Because there are additional things that we do that just don't show up in that night's giving.
That's true. That's true.
Just a point of maybe historical context for me, if you don't mind. If I'm looking at this, right, we're on page 35, right, or 36, we're discretionary funds. And I'm looking at the percentages, 0.81, 23, 0.87. Am I in the right spot for 24 and 0.83?
I'm not sure I'm on this. Are you in the?
I'm in the packet, the PDF.
Yeah. What page did you say?
Said 36. Am I looking at that right? Total 155, fiscally or 24 award? Okay. Just curious, from a historical perspective, how did we arrive at those percentages? Because what we're talking about here is a dollar amount that we're going to increase for fiscal year 25. And from my seat, what I've seen in the past is percentages. So I'm just curious as to how we arrived at that percentage, and if we can pay potentially use that as a measuring, as a way to measure going forward. How was the 0.8%?
It was never established by percentage.
Never established by percentage. It's always been by dollar amount, right?
Percentages are in there just as another.
Yeah.
Another statistic for people to check.
You know, all valid points to what everybody's commented on earlier. Yes, I think we need to do something and do more. You know, is part of that 57, you know, bump that we just got, can we redirect some of those funds and then maybe look at farther out, looking at a percentage? That way, we can know exactly how much to budget and where we need to be at from it, rather than sitting here and having a discussion and debate on, oh, I think it needs to be 10, or I think it needs to be 35. Percentage is set, that type of thing. Just something to consider, maybe.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it. I think for us, the way I started this conversation off was we have the memory of what was asked for last year, and how it felt, what else we would have needed, and that's a dollar amount that sits in there. So I think probably from a percentage standpoint, it's probably been similar in the years, in the years past. So whether it's a percent or a dollar amount, I'll not know if it makes that much of a difference, but it's a, it's a good way to look at it. $234,000 was the ask last year. And I think there was probably 40,000 of it that was probably a really, really unacceptable. We couldn't touch any of that. And that, not that we were going to, it was one that we easily walked away from. But so, all right, so not to belabor this, 165 feels like our basement. Paul, you mentioned 20,000 to bring this up to 175. Where are you guys landing on this number?
Well, I think that, you know, there clearly there's things that, you know, the staff dropped out of what their requests. So if they can get some of that money back, they would not like, want to spend all of the kind of surplus, surplus, you know, back on that and stuff. So if we wanted to bring that up, you know, we could, you know, do like 165, you know, 165 from the general fund. And then if we want to do additional monies for something, you know, we do have some ARPA money left that we could put into that at least to to get us going and not tremendously impact what the staff are trying to do with their other requests that didn't make it through the initial cut.
Yeah, I think in my mind, I've got the the 35,000 as the only dollar amount to touch. The other 57,000 that Ryan let us know about, that's for staff to take care of. I'm not in favor of generally all the 35,000 going in there, but I'd rather just stick in that pool and what we have left in there. How do you guys feel about 70,000, 170,000, 175,000?
Yeah, I could do 170.
170. It never feels like enough, but yeah, I know.
Yeah, it never does. So I'm just thinking, part of the challenge is we're not going to know what's, what's a new need that's going to develop between now and fiscal year 25.
Always the challenge.
Right? So.
We'll find out in April or May.
Yeah, how can we, how can we earmark or, you know, what can we do to at least anticipate for that? But I wouldn't be opposed to 170.
Brent, how do you feel about that?
I'd be in favor of that, Mayor.
Okay. Heads nodding for 170? Paul?
Sure.
There you go.
All right. Fair enough. Thank you very much. We will get 170 added in there right away. And then we'll keep you posted on the application process. Okay, so moving on to the last budget item really for tonight, and that is capital projects. And we have a handful of them here that I want to talk about or bring to your attention. A couple of them, we noted at the last meeting. I think what we'll do is just start with the community center, which also includes the recreation and aquatics. And so we have three projects we're looking at here. I would say this year, that as you can see in future CIP years, it gets much more expensive. This year, we're doing, proposing to do some design for the parking lot and sidewalks out around the facility. Currently in need of some attention. We mentioned at the last go, last budget session, the windows upstairs, there's 24 of those, replacing those. And then various pieces of equipment at the aquatics, aquatic center. And there's a list, there are floatables, outdoor chairs, diving boards, those things that keep people coming back, but certainly need to be replaced. And so of these three projects, Shelley is is here and can talk about that. She's also worked with Guy and Josiah on the parking lot on the design. So I guess at this point, we'd open it up for any questions on those, or any concerns or or otherwise. You know what? I will add just quickly how they're funded. The, the, the windows is a general fund expense, the parking lot design, as well as the aquatics, we transfer money over from the local option sales tax.
I think you meant hotel.
Hotel.
Thank you. If we had a local option.
Wishful, yeah.
Thank you.
I wasn't going to be the first on the jump on that, so I'll just wait. Thanks, Eric.
Any questions for Shelley or Josiah, or we put some, some exhibits in there on the parking lot. Thoughts on, on any of that? We don't have to spend time on it if you don't want to do it.
I don't really have any questions on this. A pretty, pretty small nominal list there.
Okay, well, I would just make one note on the community center. We've talked about this in previous years. We have, Shive has helped us and developed an assessment of the facility. You can see some of those projects sprinkled throughout the capital improvement plan. That facility ages. We have and will continue to need to invest money in it to to keep it into tip-top shape. Okay, so we'll move on then to parks, projects. Guy's got a list of them, and I want to make a small correction here on the Penn Meadows resurfacing the north playground. That should be 140, not 130, so $10,000 more. As noted here, this is similar to what we have at Centennial Park, and I think Guy can talk about why he envisions that a better product. Looking at the Kosher Park backstop, I know we've had, that's an old one and needs some attention. Looking at investing into Freedom Park, putting some trail in there. And then lastly, the the segment of what is now sidewalk turning into converting it to a trail between the UIHC facility and Jones Boulevard. It's the only piece that's four feet sidewalk. We think it makes sense with with the hospital there to really start putting that trail in. So those are the the park projects. Those are funded, three of the projects are funded with franchise fee. And then the trail project would be something we would, we would need to borrow for.
Something I just realized is missing is the whole next stage project. How does that fit into all of this?
Yeah, so it's missing in terms of you're not seeing it on here. It was on the FY 24 CIP. From a funding standpoint, you can see in, in like the franchise fee, we have funds being transferred out of there. We have ARP, ARPA funds, we have the borrowed, or the private donations. And then we've already transferred some general fund money over from previous years into that fund. So it's from a financing standpoint, it's not included in here because the wheels are already in motion.
From a legal perspective, it will be, the spending authority will be included in fiscal year 25 budget so that we can spend the money to build the building. So while it's not shown in the model, it will be included in state documents that are approved and ultimately give the city the ability to spend those dollars.
And where the other area where you can see how it impacts debt is there's a, there's a model in here called the TIF, Taxing and Financing Debt and General Obligation Debt. You can see how the whole CIP impacts those two models. Other questions on the park projects? I will note, Counselor Smith, you you'd brought up the the Quell Ridge or some sort of 90-foot base accommodation. We do have that listed in FY '26. Our concern with doing it this year is the parking at Quell Ridge. And so we wanted to do those together so that we have available parking for more people that are going to be there.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to just keep chugging along here. Lastly, we'll tackle these together. Michael's kind of the lead on these. We have, oh, I beg your pardon. Let's talk about Liberty Center Pond, the outcropping repair. This is a project, we had some questions on it earlier, that that guy in his department would take the lead on, although we would contract it out. It's a significant size project. And it, and as we've previously noted, there are certain areas that need are in, are in significant need of repair. Generally, this is a detention pond, although a very nice looking one. We would use stormwater funds for this. We don't have stormwater funds to do it. I'm asking the council to consider using the federal ARPA dollars to fund this project. And if there are any questions on the project, Guy can certainly help us answer those.
I appreciate your answer to the question earlier about interruptions or interruptions to the use of the pond. Does that include the trail around, or is it, do we know?
There you go.
Good evening. We have had some of this repaired done in the past. And yes, the trail does get used somewhat as access to get some of the equipment in and out. So yeah, there will be some disruptions with this project. So unfortunately, we don't, we don't have the Field Day site like we did before. That's where we staged. So it's going to be a little bit more challenging this way, just trying to figure out where we're going to stage this all to happen. Part of, part of the problem, the geotextile fabric that's underneath the the bottom layer, it erodes over time, it erodes away. They're going to have to pull those double layers. It's the sink, the double layer outcropping that's, that's failing. So we have to pull both layers, reestablish the geotextile fabric, and reset those stones. So it's labor intense. It takes a lot of time. It's not easy. And of course, I want them to go in there and not, you know, tear up the area, you know, so they need to be very gentle with their equipment. But unfortunately, you know, it's, there's going to be some damage to get it back to where it needs to be. The fluctuation of water rising and lowering over the years, it just erodes away at that. It's just mother nature, something we're going to have to look at, you know, doing every so often. So it's just this, this time, it's about half of the pond that's going to get, you know, reestablished back where it needs to be. So it's mostly all those double layer, not, not the three or four layer high areas, it's the double layer. That's going to be fixed.
Are we concerned about damage to the, to the trail itself, or just to the grass?
I wouldn't think, from thinking back, when we've had some of this work done in the past, it's lighter equipment. It's not like big excavators. It's like mini excavators with grapple hooks that can grab the rock. I had them take in rock and dirt with like gators last time, so it'd be a little bit less impact on the area. So I'll require some of the same methods used this time, too.
Just out of curiosity, because I I'm not familiar with the whole process. You said in the past, we've done that. About how often are we doing this type of work?
Yeah.
To what's, and to how much of it? Is it half this time? Is it three quarters? Is it a quarter?
Yeah, I probably had, I don't know, maybe a sixth done the last couple of times. I mean, it's just little, like $30,000 projects, you know, 30, $40,000. And we did that for a number, for a couple of years, probably, I don't know, four or five years ago. And but it's, it's, it's really, it's, in the last couple of years, it's really changed quickly.
Okay. And how long is it anticipated to last, then? It just depends on the weather.
Well, it went in in 2006, lasted for quite a few years. And then here, like in the last five years, we've had to do some minor, minor adjustments to the stone. But I don't know, it's really taken off where we, we really need to go in there and do a much larger project. We can start, keep, you know, phasing it. But I really don't want to disrupt this year after year after year to get to the point where.
Yeah, no, I understand completely. I was just wondering, the, again, I'm a look-back-to-look-forward type guy, so.
Yeah.
I wonder about the history of it, so.
Yeah. I mean, that pond really gets, it does get used a lot.
Yeah.
We host the DNR free trout fishing, you know, twice a year. And the bank has just lined up with fishermen. It's just all year round. There are ice fishers, fishermen out there right now, too.
You don't even need bait to fish out there.
Yeah. Just throw your hook out.
That's it?
Yeah, that's all it takes.
They're dumped off the truck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Good.
Any questions or objection to using ARPA funding?
Maybe just one more question. Are additional alternatives that have been reviewed, or would that, you know, from a financial standpoint, is there anything else? Or is this is the way to fix it, and this is the only way to fix it?
Well, it was engineered by Shive Hattery the first time around. That's how it was engineered. Country Landscapes, they have done the work the last two times. They're the ones who initially installed it. So I'll be getting quotes from them. Hardscapes do the same kind of work. So it's, that's basically the way to do it.
This is the way to fix it. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarity. Just looking at, you know, from an ARPA standpoint, funds and what's the overall. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, Guy.
Yep, you're welcome.
So let's, let's stick on, on the ARPA topic then. And the last three projects we have up here are Michael's the lead on, and this one would be the Leaf Collector Truck. And there was some questions about that earlier. Here again, this is a service that really is highly used. And we get a lot of calls about, you know, when are we doing it? And how long are we doing it? I mean, it's, you probably have noticed, it's, it's very well-used. So when we bought the the newer truck, we thought that we would get rid of this one, the 1998. But what we've learned is that it really makes sense to have two of these units out doing work, just two times a year. And so we're proposing to to upgrade the 1998 one. If you have questions on that, I'm going to defer all those to Michael. I would just note that, again, this, this is a big benefit to our, our sewer system as well, our storm sewer system. That's why we would generally pay for this out of stormwater. But again, trying to let that fund recover. That's why we're proposing the ARPA funds. Questions for Michael, or me, I guess?
Your, your response today was adequate to the packet, so those were questions of mine.
Oh, yeah. And for the, yeah, and for the public, this isn't that we didn't have questions. We had questions and Michael answered them really well for us earlier. So thank you for that.
Okay, so sticking with stormwater then, this would be a project, or projects that are funded by the Stormwater Fund, and that is some muddy creek flood control. And we've done some of this over the years. And similar to the, the pond, these, these areas are going to need routine and regular maintenance. And so that's what is happening here. And again, I think we had the summary of that earlier as well. So questions on, on that Lastly then is Sugar Creek Lane. Again, more, this is a mill and replace the asphalt from Sugar, on Sugar Creek Lane from Zeller to about south 500 feet. We would fund this with road use tax dollars. We set aside about $450,000 roughly a year in our street repair, we call it our street repair program. There's a, there's a, a sheet in here, a model specifically on that program. We generally let it build up a little bit to tackle a big project. Meanwhile, also trying to pick off some of these smaller projects as well. So picking off a small one here, I think next year, we've got a big one slated. That fund would then go into the red for a little bit. We'll give it a couple of years to, to bounce back.
How did this one rise to the top of the list, Ryan?
I would defer to Michael.
It was actually identified this year that a section of Sugar Creek there had started to, you can kind of see a, kind of a wave through it, through heavy traffic and just use over the years. Talking with, getting prices on, on this, talked with one of the gentlemen that actually put it in years and years ago. I believe he said it was probably 20, probably in the 25-year-old range, 25 to 30-year-old range. So it's been there a long time. It's held up really well. Obviously, as we see Rancho Way develop, and we have sections that are shut down, those side roads get more and more used. And, and so it's just a, it needs a fix on this area, and the, the rest of the road's in really good shape. So kind of one of those that popped up that you don't really plan for, but it, it showed its head and we need to take care of it, so.
How far is 500 feet?
So basically from the intersection of Zeller to the south, almost to Cooley, somewhere in there. I'll have to have some discussion with those business owners through there and, and figure out how we get access to them. And it's not a long duration project. Should be probably less than a week, so.
This is a little bit off topic, but maybe it's fresh in your mind because of the last few weeks. Are there other areas that we're finding hard to, to clear snow from because of issues with the pavement?
Um, because of issues with what?
The pavement?
No, I wouldn't say because of issues with pavement. More so that just that west side of town because of the drifting and the, and, and the winds that went through there. I would say that we've had really very good buy-in from the public on not parking on streets. I mean, you're going to have some, but overall, these last number storms have been great, which helps a ton, so.
We don't have any big issues with the plow catching and a crack or something like that?
Oh, well, I'm sure we'll find spots come spring that, that we need to do some repairs, but we haven't had any major failures, no. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, we have what we need really to, to bring you back to final report, unless there are any other questions or comments here. I would, again, I know this is a lengthy process and, and it's, it's even more so for, for the team that puts it together. So of course, thank them again, our, our staff for working on this, but also for your engagement and attention and helping us walk through this. We appreciate that and your support. So we'll have something ready for you on the 13th of February. We actually just got an email today from the county auditor, or the auditor, but the auditor's office, asking us if we could have the budget to them by March 5th, which as you might recall is 10 days earlier than previous due date. I don't mean to belabor that, which we, we can and will do and to, to their, their defense, they're not asking for it just because they have a heck of a process to go through.
Five days, right?
They have five days from the 15.
Mm-hmm.
They're asking us if, we would technically have till the 15. They're asking for the law.
Yeah, they have a very short turnaround.
They do.
For the work they have to do.
So, but we'll, we'll, we'll get that to them and make that work. So again, thank you for your time and effort on this.
And then you'll see it back again in April.
All right, so we're done?
Yes.
The budget stuff? Thank you. I appreciate you all, your time and efforts in doing this here. It's more than just these last couple of meetings. Item 11 then is our West Penn Street Improvement Project. And item A is a public hearing regarding proposed plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the West Penn Street Improvement Project. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to make comment on this improvement project? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and move on to item B, which is Resolution Number 20, 24-08. And this is a resolution approving and confirming plans, specifications, and estimate of cost for the West Penn Street Improvements Project. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions about this? Seeing none. Tracy, could I have roll call, please?
Leibold?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Ark?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 12 is our Forever Green Road Signalization Project. And item A is also a resolution number 2024-09. And this is a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing execution of the contract for the Forever Green Road Signalization Project, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Wason, seconded by Smith. Tracy, could I, are there any questions about this? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Ark?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Scanlon Annexation. And item A is Resolution Number 2024-12, a resolution approving annexation of certain property to the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this? Ryan gave us a good explanation in his report. All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries. And item D is Resolution Number 2024-14, a resolution approving the final plat for Solomon's Entertainment District, Part II, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries. And item D is Resolution Number 2024-14, a resolution approving the final plat for Solomon's Entertainment District, Part II, in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Thanks, Paul.
Second.
There we go. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Scanlon Annexation. And item A is Resolution Number 2024-12, a resolution approving annexation of certain property to the city of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions about this? Ryan gave us a good explanation in his report. All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Motion carries. And item 15 is Solomon's Entertainment District. And item A is Staff and Planning Commission Recommendations. Back to you, Russ.
So similar to item 13, but this is different in that it's facilitating newer construction. So this is a larger lot, and it would be subdivided to develop the, the hard corner, as we call it. The city council's already approved the preliminary site plan, so we'll expect construction to happen sometime in the spring. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the preliminary site, I'm sorry, the preliminary plat, and staff recommends approval of, of both plats.
Thank you. Any questions for Russ? Item B, applicant presentation. Still shaking your heads back there? Short comments at P&amp;Z meeting. Are there any, there's nothing else, Russ, for presentation wise?
Correct.
Okay. I'll move on to item C then. This is Resolution Number 2024-13. And this is a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Solomon's Entertainment District, Part II, North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Park?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Wason?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Motion carries. And item D is Resolution Number 2024-14, a resolution approving the final plat for Solomon's Entertainment District, Part II, in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on this? All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Hi.
Siddig?
Hi.
Park?
Hi.
Leibold?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Motion carries. Item 16 is anything in the old business category. Seeing none, new business?
Yes, sir. Beat the bitter starts this weekend.
That's right.
So.
5K Saturday, and don't forget fireworks Sunday night.
I think the run is Friday.
Oh, is it Friday? I'm sorry. Friday. Thank you, Shelley, for, and my colleague Eric for correcting me. Friday. Go run Friday.
Do we get credit for already beating the bitter with all the snow we've cleared?
No.
Thanks, thanks, Guy. Thanks, Guy. Item 18 is motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.